Good evening. My name is Jill Cohen, and I am a member of the League of Women Voters of Washtenaw County. Welcome to our online forum featuring candidates for the Syo Township Board of Trustees. These candidates will be on the ballot in the primary election on Tuesday, August 2nd. The League of Women Voters works to expand voter rights and educate voters. We are a nonpartisan organization and neither endorse nor oppose candidates or political parties. The League is providing this forum as an opportunity for candidates to express their views related to their candidacy, which the League does not endorse or oppose. The League does not certify any candidate responses to questions as accurate. Voters are encouraged to fact-check information shared at this forum. We bring you tonight's forum because we believe deeply that respectful sharing of views on community issues is vital to the functioning of American democracy. Our moderator this evening is John Chamberlain, who will explain the format and get us started.
So, we're going to start with opening statements. As I said before, you get a minute apiece on that. Closing statements will be 90 seconds, and in between, you'll have two minutes to answer each question. And the candidates will begin speaking in alphabetical order, ordered by last name. Depending on the number of questions, all candidates will have an opportunity to be first, or second, or third, to answer the questions. We are now ready for your opening statement. Ms. Carey?
Hello, I am Gillian Michelle Carey. I'm an 11-year resident of Syo Township. I am a resident advocate and activist. I have been heavily involved in our township for the last four years, helping residents with their issues, going to board meetings, and educating myself on local government and... I am also on the Road Advisory Committee.
Mr. McLaughlin, your opening statement.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Patrick McLaughlin. I'm currently serving as a trustee at the Syo Township. I was appointed in March to replace a vacancy on the board. My family and I moved to Syo Township in 2000 for a variety of reasons. Several criteria we considered before we moved here. One of the things that really enchanted us about the area was the combination of rural and business opportunities in the area. So, in addition to serving on the board, I've also, for the previous four years, was on the Parks Advisory Board in Syo Township. And I've been enjoying meeting the constituents and opening up park areas for the residents of Syo Township.
Thank you. And now, Mr. McIlian.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Abby McIlian. I'm a first-generation Persian immigrant to the United States. I'm a naturalized US citizen. My wife and I moved to Syo Township back in 2016. As far as Syo is concerned, it's of the last census. Syo is 25% non-white, 15% foreign-born, which are naturalized US citizens, the same as me. However, the outreach to the minority community, including the racial minority, as well as the LGBT community, is nearly zero. The entire government apparatus is white Anglo-Saxon. I'm here to expand the reach, and I'm here to expand the access to the government and give a voice to one of each four persons who is non-white in the community, who currently has no recognition by the government, by our local government in Syo.
Thank you. Now, we'll turn to the questions. As a reminder, I will read your question once, and it will not be repeated unless you request it. We will start with Mr. McLaughlin for the first question. Please identify the top three concerns that residents of Syo Township have expressed to you. If you are elected, describe the steps you would take to address one of these issues.
A consistent concern from the community is the staffing issue at Syo Township. We're a growing community, but we're also experiencing some growing pains. We're currently reviewing the opportunities and assessing the needs of the community, or the needs of the internal staffing, which we hope to fill soon. We've just recently had an administrator resign. We have an interim administrator, so we have a search ongoing for replacement for that person, as well as some other positions as well. Oh, you asked me for three. Some other concerns that we have certainly are infrastructure. And another issue that we've dealt with just recently is the fact that it's going to be necessary for us to expand our fire department reach to adequately service the entire community. So, those are several of the issues that we're dealing with currently.
Thank you. Mr. McIlian, yes, same.
Three of the issues, top issues, which people have expressed to me. One is the access by minorities to the local government, which is non-existent. The outreach from the local government to the minority community, which is non-existent. Number two is the treatment of the LGBT community in Syo Township, which is a progressive township, which by certain members of the current board has been very dismal. The fact that they have, on religious grounds, gone after our clerk, who happens to be openly LGBT, that's a concern. Number three is that the infrastructure of the Syo Township, i.e. the sewage pipe, which connects us from here to Ann Arbor, is very old. And the current regime likes to do a study, and then they like to do another study to study their study. Then they do another study to study their study. And they don't take any action. There's studies done back in 2018 about the expansion of the fire department. And prior to that, and just now, we are talking about maybe expanding the fire department. And we don't even know if that maybe will come true. Certain members of this board during the past election ran as Democrats, but in fact are not Democrats. They knew that in Syo Township, if they run, they have to run as a Democrat to win. I mean, Mr. McLaughlin, who was appointed, he is not a Democrat. On his application in 2020, he wrote, and I have it right here, "non-party affiliation." Then instantly, he changed it and crossed it out, and he wrote "democratic." So, in two seconds, Mr. McLaughlin became from a non-party to a Democrat. So, this is a process, which is against the law. And this is a process that we have a bunch of what I call Manchurian candidates, non-Democrats, who are portraying and pretending to be Democrats. And that's why nothing is getting done at the township, because they're all running against the government. In fact, they're practicing what I call Reaganomics.
Thank you. Ms. Carey?
Could you repeat the question again, please?
Please identify the top three concerns that residents of Syo Township have expressed to you. If you are elected, describe the steps you would take to address one of these issues.
Yes, well, the top three that I'm working with residents, lack of communication. They feel, residents feel that they are unheard. They feel that there's not inclusion. And the second, that number one, the second one is the Gellman Dioxin flu. This is a real concern. It is spreading. There's wells that were non-detect before that are detect. And we're very concerned about it spreading to our municipal water source. The third thing is our staffing issues. In all departments, we are short-staffed, and this is causing a real issue. Especially in the finance department, there's a lot of mistakes that have been happening that need to be corrected. And this is a deep concern for residents and where their taxpayer money is going. Our fire department, I have worked very hard to build up our fire department. The building was falling apart. I got involved, along with other residents, and that has helped the department and the morale. However, we do need more safety structure, and we need to expand the fire department. How would I help all of this? The same I've been doing for four years is studying and advocating and being a presence for the community, for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next question, and Mr. McIlian, let's begin this one. Syo is presently a general law township. Do you support Syo Township remaining a general law township, or instead converting to a charter township? And why do you say this?
Well, that's something that would have to be put to the vote of the residents of Syo Township. A comparative analysis of the benefits of one versus the other. My concerns is that whatever label we put on Syo Township, the same people who are running the township right now would be running it, and they're not going to follow the rules as they haven't been under the current charge. The major problem that we have in Syo Township is that they all know that Syo is a progressive township. They know that in order to win in Syo, they have to run as Democrats. And this is exactly what they did during the last election. I'll give you an example, Mr. McLaughlin, he's not the only one. Ms. Carey just mentioned we have a lot of problems with our finance department. Where our treasurer, Donna Palmer, point-blank has told me and other people, although she is a Democrat, anybody who knows her knows that she's not a Democratic person. But in this township, if you want to win, you have to write her a Democrat. That is not what the law prescribed. The law doesn't say that you have to portray yourself as somebody else just so you can get elected. In fact, it is against the MCL. And in fact, to lie on the applications is a felony punishable by up to five years in prison. The problem that we have is that bunch of people back in 2020, which starts with the current supervisor, Will Hataway, and his clique, which they all always walked lockstep. And if you sit there during our meetings and watch them, what they are doing, they're actually running against the government. So, although they label themselves Democrats, they're doing everything that a Republican would do. And that's why nothing is getting done in this Democratic township, because the people who ran in the last election, many of them unfortunately lied to the candidates, claimed they were Democrats just so they could get on the ballot and get elected. But I need to, I need to clean that up. The people have co-opted my party, who are not Democrats, who are running as Democrats, by portraying themselves as someone who's not to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carey?
General law versus charter township? That was the question. I support staying a general law township. The reason why, the number one reason, is it keeps more power in the hands of the people. Going to a charter, we do have, that also gives us a lower tax base. However, we can still have the infrastructure. We can have the foundation to support our community and keep it semi-rural. Going to a charter township status, yes, that's true. It would need a vote by the people. However, it also takes away the power of the people, because it gives more power to the board. They can make decisions that we would not be involved in. It also would potentially raise our taxes by five times. A general law township is a 1 mil tax base. A charter township is a 5 mil tax base minimum. So, with our finance, lack of finance staff and the mismanagement of our funds now, it's not going to get any better with more money. We need to get the structure in place first before we even consider going to a charter township. Another reason to go to a charter township is threat of annexation, and we are not under threat of annexation. That would be, if we were, that would be a very reasonable ballot question for our voters. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes, as both Abby and Gillian have mentioned, this would really be a decision for the voters. The advantage, as Gillian mentioned, is that you can protect the township from annexation from nearby community, like in Ann Arbor, if they chose to. As you know, Dexter City became, they moved away from the township and became a separate entity. But as we are not currently under threat for that, I would not recommend going to a charter township that would have a considerably higher tax base. Another potential benefit of going as a charter township is that you could have your own employees actually doing, you know, waste management, trash pickup, that kind of thing, as opposed to having another third party do that on your taxpayers' behalf. But I think that if we were to take the pulse of the township, I think that everybody is very pleased with the general law situation that we're currently in and would probably prefer to be there. That would be my best guess.
Okay, thank you. Onto the next question, with Ms. Carey leading off. In November, voters will be asked to renew the land preservation millage, which was renewed 10 years ago by a wide margin. Do you support renewal of the millage, and how has it benefited or harmed the township?
Generally, I do support land preservation. I was a farmer at one time, when my children were small. So, land and nature is very important to me. However, with the lack of staffing in our finance department and all the issues that we've had with our money, I do not support millages at this time, and I'm sorry to say that. I do want this to happen, but we have things that need to be put in place in order for this money to be handled properly.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you for that question, because I think land preservation is one of the really remarkably innovative and successful programs that the township has undertaken. Since 2004, when the initial millage was granted, the township has been able to actually secure a total of, I believe it was, I've got it written here, 1,700 acres have been preserved of farmland, open space, and forest area. It's about 11% of the entire township. Of the $8.4 million that the taxpayers have paid through their generous voting since that 2004 millage, we've spent a total of 20, because for every dollar that we have as a tax on our citizens, we're actually able to match that with a dollar and a half. So, to date, we've spent $8.4 million from Syo taxpayer money since 2004. We've actually also gotten $12.3 million from federal and state conservation partners. It's a tremendous improvement. It's really an opportunity to retain some of what the rural landscape and the rural character of the township, which makes it so dear to so many people. And as a matter of fact, just last week, we concluded the purchase of a 100-acre farm, the Wren's Farm. And Syo Township is instrumental and really an example of the buy-protect-and-sell program, which actually allows you to keep farms working and keep them safe from development. I'm totally in support of the millage.
Thank you. Mr. McIlian?
Yes, I am also totally in support of the millage. Although, as Ms. Carey said, things are not perfect in the township as far as the staffing. We can let perfect become the enemy of good. As we know, there is great pressure of all the businesses and the population moving to Syo Township. So, we need to act accordingly and be able to purchase and preserve enough of the land in Syo Township to keep its character, because we could become, if you stop buying the protected land, we could become to the point of no return, when there may not be enough land left to be able to purchase, to be able to preserve the nature, the rural nature, or the mixed-use nature of Syo Township. I do believe it's a program which brings in quite a bit of money from the federal and state partners. And I think anytime you can get other grant money, which, you know, augments and supplements what your taxpayers put into the caddy, it increases your economical benefits. So, there is no reason why to stop taking those monies for the citizens of Syo Township. You know, they're well-deserved, because if you stop taking those monies, there's other municipalities which will take those monies. So, in closing, I think it has been a very successful program. Although I'm a newcomer to the issue, I fully support it. And I think the millage needs to be renewed, and I think we need to continue trying to preserve some of these large swaths of land, while we are also working on the corrections of the staffing and whatnot at our local government. It appears that I have 30 seconds, but thank you for the time.
Thank you. Okay. The next question. Township board meetings have sometimes been lengthy and rankerous, and have involved personal verbal attacks by trustees and members of the public. Please identify two specific proposals to improve the effectiveness and civility of board meetings. Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes, I was quite surprised when I started watching board meetings at how they can become very adversarial, and people are very passionate about their feelings. One of the things that I have recommended that we do, because a lot of the controversy, or some of what could be considered an argument or differences of opinion, are all based on the agenda items. And there's frequently a lot of wordsmithing that goes on in the public venue. And what I've recommended to the officers of the township is that they meet prior to when the agendas are posted online, so that they can go over all of the different agenda items, so that everybody is understanding what is going to be discussed. And if they have any questions, they can clear that up before we get into a public venue. I think that that would go a long ways towards shortening the meetings. And as you've mentioned, some of them are quite lengthy. And frankly, it's well past my bedtime on several of them. So, one thing I would like to say, though, is that I think that sometimes the tone gets disrespectful. And I wish that we could just all be positive, and even if we disagree with each other on different topics, we don't have to be disagreeable. And I would like to just see a much more positive atmosphere there. And I think that it would go a long ways towards smoothing out the efficiency of the meetings and having them concluded a reasonable time.
Thank you. Mr. McIlian?
The township meetings are rankerous, because there is really the real differences. Because the current local government is not responsive to the needs of a large swath of the population. I have repeatedly admonished this local government that, according to the last US census, one out of each four citizens and residents of Syo Township is a non-white person, but there is no outreach to the minority community. I often speak to the members who say the government doesn't do anything for us. You don't see the presence of any of the minorities at the board meetings. They try to avoid everything. And if you come, even in the appointments to their advisory boards, is a majority, and I don't know how else to say it, white Anglo-Saxon rule is going on in your township, which is progressive township, and in a township, which is one out of four, is a minority. But you don't see them being appointed, maybe one or two token here and there. And also, the current supervisor, Will Hataway, which Mr. McLaughlin ran last time on his slate, has a group which they vote in a block. They disrespect the other people on the board which disagree with them. So, this meeting beforehand to try to hash things out is not going to work, because truly, there are some who are true Democrats on the board. Then you have the Manchurian candidates next to them, sitting on the board, acting as if they're Democrats, but they are not. Therefore, because the policies which are being exposed by the true Democrats, which includes our clerk, Jessica Flintoff, and some other board members, are in complete contradiction with the policies of Will Hataway and the gang, there is not going to be any accommodation. The accommodation, the problem, is that these people, with all due respect, lied to the citizens of Syo Township. They claimed they were Democrats, they are not. Their voting record shows they were not. The documents shows they were not. They violated the... Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Carey?
Could you repeat that question again, please? I want to make sure I have it right.
Township board meetings have sometimes been lengthy and rankerous, and have involved personal verbal attacks by trustees and members of the public. Please identify two specific proposals to improve the effectiveness and civility of board meetings.
That's a really good question. I have attended all board meetings except two in the last four years, and the dynamics has changed. Yes, there's a power dynamic going on. And part of the issue is that we have committee members that have come from committees that are on the board, and they're running the township as from a committee point of view. They're not looking at the big picture. Working together with the different plans and projects, and communicating, and putting our egos aside. And yes, there are personal attacks. I hear from residents to the board. I hear and have read in board member emails the same towards residents. So, there is, there needs to be a deep healing. And this deep healing comes from listening and communicating. When residents show up and in droves, this is the record number of residents ever in board meetings consistently, they have serious concerns. The board members need to listen, to listen to their concerns, based on what the residents need, not on our personal agendas. Regarding the board members, if I was on the board, I would be actively working to communicate and advocate communication. There's always a win-win situation. There's always a seed of greatness within adversity, if we can just work together and come together. It doesn't seem to happen. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next question is, how can Syo Township successfully balance its rural persona with demand for housing and the desire for economic development? Mr. McIlian?
Well, the balancing comes apart by the land preservation that we just talked about, that we need to be cognizant of the lifestyle of people. We do need, we are blessed with a lot of businesses moving into the township, which has increased our tax base, which in turn keeps the taxes for the residents low. So, that's an advantage. I think we need to identify areas where there would be higher density for technology and for businesses and whatnot. But there is areas close to the different residential neighborhoods that we need to try to buy and preserve lands around to keep the balance of the, and the commitment that we have to the citizens of Syo Township, that we want to preserve their lifestyle, as well as their economical upward mobility. So, the balance would come from a long-term planning of deciding what percentage of the land, up to now, it was around 11%, do we want to preserve in a rural green space farm and whatnot? And what percentage, and in what areas, do you want to have higher density for the business, kind of like Jackson Road for businesses, or in some areas, higher density for residents moving in? Lately, Syo has been approving more high-density developments. I also do think that we need to kind of be cognizant and careful of that, because they create a problem that people don't have enough green space, so they leave their space and go to the low-density areas to take advantage of those areas, which by in turn creates pressure on the low-density areas. So, a long-term planning, which would include the economic, the social, and environmental impact, would all have to come together to create a balance, which would be an overall winning formula for the entire Syo Township and its citizens and residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carey?
The economic development and the balance of rural and planning. Yes, so, as I said before, I was a farmer, so open spaces and farmland and rural. I live on a dirt road, and I love it. We need to keep that, and not, I'm saying not dirt roads, but the rural mixed in with the economic development. Businesses need to be... Businesses need to be supported. We need to attract new businesses. As you know, COVID has shut down a lot. People have moved on. There's a different work environment now. And also smart development. It seems that the master plan has changed. And we are allowing developers to come in, as we always have. But we've changed the master plan to support developers a little bit more. And it is causing some issues with residents in the areas. But there, there doesn't need to be. If we can keep the, the big picture, the safety and welfare and the health of our, our community, along with developing, because we're going to need more housing, more senior housing. And we do have some plans in the works right now. Heritage Woods is one of them that comes to mind. And keep the rural at the same time, the open spaces around that. Develop the economic. It's, it's kind of a balancing act, but it can all work together. Can be developed together. Thank you.
I think Mr. McLaughlin didn't get to answer.
Well, thank you for that question. And I think that the combination of the rural and the, the business community is really one of the things that initially attract us to the area and something we want to maintain. And I think it's something that SIO Township has done a very good job of in terms of planning. As you, as you know, the Jackson corridors were primarily where all of the, where the most of the business and manufacturing areas are, as well as retail with Myers there. And it's, it's localized there in a very convenient way. And it's attractive with a medium. But it does allow the neighborhoods to grow organically outside of that. But it's near enough to be convenient to arrive at them. I think one of the challenges that we do have in the community, though, is a lack of affordable housing. One of the companies that came to us for a tax abatement recently indicated that, you know, they're, they wanted to hire several people at, you know, the prevailing, not the prevailing wage, but the minimum wage is around fifteen dollars. And it would be very difficult for someone to afford to live in our community if, if that was the amount of money that they were making in the job. So I think it's important that, you know, we have good access to public transportation. One of the other things that I think is really an attractive feature of the area is the fact that we're developing a pathway down Zeb Road that will allow for the safe transportation of bikers and hikers. Then it will extend all the way to the B2B trail eventually. So I think that getting people outside, having them take advantage of the natural features of our environment, it's a win-win for everyone.
Okay, now we move to the final question. And we will begin with Ms. Carrie. Please describe a specific example of how you made a difficult decision because of a core value that you hold.
Well, that's a very interesting question. Make a decision based on a core value I have? Well, I live in my values, so it's not really a decision. I just live it. So something, well, okay, I became involved in the township because I saw injustice. I saw things going on that were not on the up and up, that were not in the best interest of residents. And I got involved in that in spite of me being a very private, quiet, want-to-live-my-own-life person. So I stepped out of my comfort zone and I did that. And I am, I've been doing this for four years. So if, I don't know if that's answered the question because it's a, I just live my truth. I don't think about it. So I get involved when I need to. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin?
Well, I'm glad that Jillian had to answer that question before I did. It's a difficult one. I think something that I share with Jillian is the fact that I enjoy working on behalf of the community. And I feel like service to the community is something that I enjoy doing. And I have the opportunity to do it now as a semi-retired person. I have much greater bandwidth. But I never have been really the public person that was in front of the, you know, and the object of everybody's attention. I was always sort of in the background. Some of my previous life professionally was as a video producer. And I enjoyed working with people that were in front of the camera. But I was, you know, the hidden guy behind there. But actually, when I started working more proactively on the Parks Advisory, Parks Advisory Board, it was necessary for me to become more public and get more involved with people and express my opinions more. And that has come to the forefront even more so now that I'm on the board. So it's necessary for me to be an extrovert. It's not necessarily a valued question. But I think that it's, it's something that's appropriate for someone who's in the, in the public eye. And it's not natural for me, but it's something that I'm working on and hopefully getting better at.
Thank you. And Mr. Vicarien?
Could you repeat the question one more time, please?
Sure. Please describe a specific example of how you made a difficult decision because of a core value that you hold.
Being that I migrated to the US at age sixteen and in my native country, overnight we lost our freedom and lost multiple family members. I don't take the blessings of freedom for granted. Despite a busy life, at every election, I've acted as a community organizer and election watcher, including the last election. I believe that in order for democracy to flourish, we have to reach out to the people in our community who are not involved, the people who are the least among us. During the second term of President Obama in Florida, I was a community organizer with two other people. We registered more than nine hundred thirty-seven people. We, I arranged for caravans. I asked my two colleagues to call every family member and every friend they had in chat vans and SUVs to take these people of less means to the polls and a stand guard every ten feet to make sure that the people who wanted them not to vote would not be harassing them. The last election cycle, also, I was downtown Detroit, face to face with the Proud Boys who were trying to break into the election headquarters, despite the threats which I received and despite the fact that it had certain aspects of danger for my wife. Despite the fact that I was followed, I felt that it is the right thing to do. I felt that in this time, in these trying times, our country was on the verge of becoming by the last president, becoming literally a dictatorship. So I wanted to do everything in my power for my nieces and nephews and whatnot. And the children to feel that, you know, we are born in this country, that they would feel a part of this country just because of their color of the skin or their color of hair and whatnot. They are not outsiders, that they are also a part in this country. So I have donated enormous amount of time. I've given myself all these unpaid jobs, I call them unpaid jobs, to take care of the situation and my respect for democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all three of you for your answers. And now it's time for closing statements. And we will begin with Ms. Carrie.
As a trustee, I will not, I will, I will not, I will continue to do what I have been doing for the past four years, but in an, in an official position. I will continue to advocate for residents. I will continue to study statutes, ordinances, policies, procedures, make sure that we are following them. I will advocate for and as well, live it myself, communicate with others, really listen, and I do that now. This is why I have a lot of residents reach out to me when they have problems. So there's not much would change, except that I would be in a, in an official role. And I so appreciate this opportunity to be able to express and answer questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin.
Well, thank you for the opportunity as well. I just would like to say that now that I am a trustee, it really is a tremendous learning curve. And I have a great appreciation for everybody who serves the community in that regard. I hope to get, you know, better and improve as I learn more about the functioning of the, of the township. And I think that one of the things I really enjoy about the job is just being able to help make decisions that I think are driving SIO Township in the right direction. I know that there's, you know, as you indicated, there's a lot of dissension sometimes at board meetings. There are improvements that need to be done. And I do listen to the people that have complaints about the way the business is conducted. And we are in the process of making improvements, which I hope everyone will find appropriate and something that they can support. And finally, I just want to say that I think that SIO Township is a tremendous place to live. And I feel a great deal of honor being able to serve the community.
Mr. Vicarien?
Okay, so I believe in the importance of public service. As I said before, I'm grateful for the blessings and freedoms that our country has to offer us. Preservation or liberty requires constant participation on the part of all of us citizens. I have repeatedly acted as a poll watcher during the elections in the states of Michigan, Ohio and Florida. My background and training, for years, I've been a small business owner in the fields of auto sales and real estate. My undergraduate degrees are in political science and economics. So I'm well-suited because I can think about both politics and the income or the numbers which go hand in hand with what we want to accomplish. And as advertised before, as by my repeated comments to the board, as I have explained, I want to bring a different point of view, a more inclusive point of view to SIO Township. I want to bring a point of view that unfortunately, because of the homogeneity, you know, people who are on the board, they don't have the appreciation for the difference and for the diversity which exists in our community. I want to give a voice to the people who don't have a voice currently, whether it's because of the race and gender background or what you call it, a sexual identity. So that is my mission. Thank you.
The League wishes to thank the candidates for participating in tonight's forum and also thanks those who contributed questions. All of our candidate forums are available for streaming from our website, lvwwashtenaw.org. The forums can also be viewed on Ann Arbor's Cable Television News. Please urge others to watch these forums and please share the links with them. For additional nonpartisan information on candidates and ballot issues, go to vote411.org, the League's voter resource guide covering local, state and federal candidates and current ballot proposals. As a reminder, all voters are now eligible to cast an absentee ballot and Michigan law provides for election day registration. Whether by absentee ballot or in-person, please vote in the August second primary election. Thank you and have a good evening.